Okay. Everybody reading? Everybody reading? Everybody got their books and tabulations right? Ready to go. All right. I'd like to call the Winterville Town Budget Meeting back into session.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry to interrupt, but since Don's out, if y'all would just make sure I capture the motions in the seconds. I usually try to write them down, but bear with me.
We not live right now.
Yes, we are. Evan's got it going on. Okay. Okay.
Thank you. I'm the same way. In the heat of battle, we get our blood. If you stand for the flag, please.
Plaid. Plaid, please. To the flag, by the United States of America. The Republic, which is standing. One nation, one ground.
Again, I'd like to welcome everyone back to our budget meeting tonight. My name is Ricky Hines, the mayor. Next, we'll have the town manager.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna start this evening with Councilwoman Smith.
Present.
Councilwoman Robertson.
Here.
Mayor Protim Harrell. Mayor Hines.
Present.
Councilman Johnny Moore.
Present.
And Councilwoman Hawkins.
Present.
Mayor and council. Everyone is accounted for and present.
Thank you. Next up is approval of the agenda. Anybody see any corrections?
No, sir.
Second.
Have a motion made by Councilman Johnny Moore, second by Councilwoman Hawkins, to approve the agenda. End of discussion. All vote by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion paid. Next up is item for discussion, and I turn it over to town manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Appreciate everybody being willing to get back together one more time, and hopefully this is the last time outside of public hearing and our regular council meeting to discuss budget. I do have some updated documents that you have at your seats. You have an updated budget message dated the 28th. You have a set of revenues with a blue sheet to use as the divider between the current and the previous. And the same for your, and that goes behind, is tabs one, three, and four. The expenditures are in tab four. So just a kind of an update there. Anthony has also presented you lovely colored handouts. He'll be going over that information here shortly. Wanted to quickly go over, and first of all, I'd like to thank staff. Between Thursday night and about 4:30 this afternoon, staff really went to work on Friday, Thursday and Friday, and even today, working hard to help balance the budget. As of about 4:30 this afternoon, it is balanced. We made great progress in trying to not use fund balance if we didn't have to. However, there is, there are small amounts, and we'll go over that in just a second. But I'm going to just sort of go over again the budget message, and then I'll try to answer any questions that you have. Again, we're happy to say that the draft budget as of today is balanced. Just wanted to go over some of the items included in the draft budget. Council voted to set the tax rate at the last meeting to 45 cents, which will be a reduction from 47 and a half. Your current draft budget is based on the 45 cent tax rate. The rate adjustments we've previously discussed, nothing has changed with respect to that. The budget does include some positions and position funding adjustments. There are some capital outlay requests. Most of those will be financed, but there will be some purchased outright. This draft includes your approvals for non-town agencies. And let's see, you will see at the bottom that 25,000 has been included for the multipurpose building capital reserve fund. And as you see typos, please forgive me, Jessica and staff and all of us will be giving it a good once-over before we finalize things. So if you see typos, please let me know. Working on page two. Total general fund budget is 15,517,275. There is a fund balance appropriation of 386,483, which I think last year we appropriated 612,000, thereabouts, of fund balance. So it is less, probably the smallest amount that we have utilized in a long time. And the electric fund transfer remains at 350,000. You will see the non-town agency approvals reflected, and I already see that fiscal year is wrong, so I will change that. But the total now for non-town agencies is 100,000, based off council's vote. I won't go over those individually. You all know what they are. It references also the Shepherd Memorial Library amount in the bullet forms. And you will also see an added bullet talking about capital requests and how the debt proceeds process is used. So basically, this first budget year, which will be '24, '25, you will see totals in and totals out. And then you'll see payments after the, for the, oh lord, I just lost my train of thought. Thank you. The debt service payments will take place the year after going forward. And Recreation Fund, their total budget is 1,43,454. I'm sorry. And of that, 1,43,454 has been transferred from General Fund to help with the operation of that department. Power Bill Fund is balanced at an amount of 387,263. Moving on to page three. You'll see the Urgent Repair Fund includes a $20,000 allocation for the coming budget year. You'll see a new fund, Safe Routes to Schools grant, and that total budget is estimated to be 60,922. Then we move into our Enterprise Funds. Electric, that budget is totaled 8,848,885. There is currently no fund balance contribution included in that budget. The Water Fund, the total is 2,69,771. There is a contribution from fund balance included in the amount of 288,838, and 560,000 included for water purchase for resale. There's one new position in that fund. That's for a utility maintenance mechanic. Moving into the Sewer Fund, that fund totals 3,318,511. There's a very small $26,000 fund balance appropriation in that fund. Again, the CMSD contribution for the coming year is 1,429,770. There is also one new position in that fund, also a utility maintenance mechanic. Talks about a loan that was made from the Water Fund to the Sewer Fund, and the payback of that is denoted there. And the Stormwater Fund is estimated to be 584,000. And there is also one position, an equipment operator, denoted in that fund. They are the highlights. In the General Fund, there is some increased funding for some part-time positions that already exist. And there is one reclassification of one position that will be taking place. And then, again, their capital outlay purchases or capital purchases, many of which will be financed with debt, and a few of them will be bought outright. I believe we're purchasing four vehicles, if I'm not mistaken. And I think that's pretty much the overview for predominantly public works, I believe. Just public works. And we have one vehicle also being purchased for Parks and Rec. Those departments are, and there are some other places, but truck, I call them vehicle poor in terms of it's been a while since some of the vehicles have been changed out there. We're currently operating some old vehicles, so that is definitely needed. Did I miss anything? I think that pretty much sums it up. But could not have presented this tonight without the hard work of all staff here, so I am really thankful that they really pulled their sleeves up and got to work. So thanks to everybody. I really appreciate it.
Anyone, anyone have any questions on the council right now for the staff?
Yes, for the new year. It will be in the $80,000 range, I believe. Yes. Can't tell you specifically, but it's pretty close.
I have a question about the, the new positions.
Ma'am.
When will the new positions be advertised? And will that, I guess when they're advertised, they'll have the criteria for qualification.
Yes, ma'am.
So that was, that's just my question.
And they will be effective after July 1st, and we will be advertising them shortly thereafter. Yes. Well, there's some additional money for part-time hours in fire. They have what we, they have part-time engineers, and what will happen is that salary money is doled out to several people who work part-time shifts. So there's some additional funding there. It's really not positions, per se. Could be additional positions we bring on, but they're not, I mean, they change often. And then there'll be a reclassification of a position in the Police Department. We have a corporal, and we don't really have that, we don't use the title of corporal much anymore. So we'll be reclassifying that position to a sergeant's position. I think it was referenced. I don't think it was funded. I believe that was pulled out in the cuts. Yes. Didn't want to, but we needed to.
Um, these sheets are, Anthony's gonna talk about these.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? Y'all want any?
I do. Just a question. I know Parks and Recreation, they will be receiving a new vehicle because the vehicles that are being used are older now. Will that be in addition, or will they get rid of the other vehicles? Or just for clarification?
Gonna ask Diane to speak on that. Talk loudly. Are you replacing a vehicle?
That would be in addition to. Thank you.
Are, are we getting a new? Anybody?
Working, as a matter of fact, they're holding interviews as we speak.
Oh, okay.
Correct.
I know you like that. All right.
Yes, sir. That is a possibility, correct. Correct. But that's not guaranteed. Correct. Everyone is eligible for merit based on your performance? No. It depends on your performance. And if you're not performing to standard, you will not receive a merit. If you're not performing your job to standard, you will not receive a merit. Correct. And then, there's gonna be a lot of conversation that goes along if you're not meeting standard, so there's a lot of work that will be done there. But merit's based on performance. Well, we haven't set the percentages. That's the range. But if you meet standard, you'll be eligible for a merit, and if you exceed standard, you'll be eligible for a merit. Well, again, normally what's gonna happen is because we're not far enough along in our merit process yet, Angie and I will determine what the merit percentage is for meet standards, and then what the marriage, merit percentage is for exceed standards. And it will be that specific percentage for one as well as the other. Yes. Yes, sir. Well, it'll be all up to them. And they do work hard. They, they work hard. Oh, I'm good. Anybody else have any questions about what you, what I presented or we presented this evening? Well, Anthony wants to delve into and follow up from what he briefly discussed with you all last week.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So tonight before you, we have a rate structure that we had talked about as being important to the future of the, of the electric department. And as you may recall, this really came about after the tremendous natural gas rate increases that occurred a few years ago, and really hit the electric fund pretty hard. And at a time, we realized that, you know, the rate structure was kind of antiquated, and it was a little bit dated. We also realized that the way it was designed is essentially kind of hurting certain users inadvertently. And so the goal, we contracted out with an engineering firm, electric engineer, to step back, take a look, analyze our rates, analyze, you know, some other possibilities, different types of rates. And it wasn't a situation where we wanted to generate more revenue with our rates, but it was a situation where we wanted it to be less extreme during cold and weather events and hot weather events. So the goal was to say, you know, hey, let's, let's look at our fixed costs, let's look at our, you know, variable costs, and then see how that compares, and see what we can do to make it so that these extreme events don't hurt the customer so bad. And so what we have before you, the first schedule here is kind of busy. The main thing I want to point to everybody is that there's the base rate on the left, that's our current situation. Excuse me. That's the determinant, like, so the number of customers, number of kilowatt-hours, things of that nature. The second column is our existing rates, and then the third column is our recommended rates. And so we worked with the consulting engineer, and to come up with the recommended rates that would fit well for Winterville. One, one of the things we have, you'll see, is if you see in the second column on the residential service, you see that average annual revenue is a $4,784,210. Under, under the new proposed rate structure, we're seeing $4,787,106. So it's negligible, the change in amount of revenue that a town is going to see. As I, as I walk you through this tonight, you'll see at the end how it's gonna affect people based on their kilowatt-hour usage. But let me point out a few things here. Facility charges, still looking at the residential services. The first line there is the facility charge, and that was, it's currently $12.82. And then we're recommending a $20 facility charge, which is still lower than other people in the area. You also see that we have, currently, we have a, what's called a block rate system, where it changes based on the number of kilowatts used. And that's kind of an outdated system as well. The current recommendation, or new recommendation, you'll see that it actually drops the kilowatt rate per hour, kilowatt-hour rate. So instead of the first 800 kilowatt-hours being 11, the .1151, you know, we're just gonna drop to .1053. And so you can see that even with the block rate, even the over 800 kilowatt-hours is still gonna be, the new rate is gonna be lower than that. So what's gonna happen is, you know, in those high-demand periods, the bill to the customer is just not gonna be as expensive. Ultimately, the main thing I want you to take away from all of these, one is we're lowering, while we're maybe increasing the facility charge, we are lowering that kilowatt, kilowatt-per-hour rate. So you'll see a decrease there. The other thing is, and I've already mentioned, basically, each one of these scenarios generates a same amount of revenue for the town. So this is, the whole goal is not to have a rate increase, but was to create a structure that's better for the customer. It also creates a better situation for the town and Winterville itself, because it streamlines, it evens out our cash flows, so that, you know, in our shoulder months, which are, you know, April, May, and June, and then September, October, November, that's when our demands drop. During those shoulder months, you know, you'll see cash drop. So what this does is it'll level, it'll stabilize our cash flows throughout the year, which is always a good thing. Moving to small general services, we don't, you know, we have about 110 of these customers. Basically, you'll see the facility charge go on from $34.50 to $40. You'll see the kilowatt-per-hour rate decreasing for the first 3,000, and then after that, it'll be slightly higher. Still, again, expecting the same amount of revenue for the town. Medium, general services, we have 89 customers in this classification. Facility charges, this is probably one of the more dramatic ones. It's going from $18.43 to $50. You're getting rid of the block rate per kilowatt-hour, and dropping that to 9.61 cent. And then your demand rate is changing. So demand services are applied to basically your commercial accounts that have to have stronger infrastructure in place. They're pulling a lot more energy. And so in order to account for that, everybody, once you get to a certain kilowatt-hour demand, starts charging these demand charges. And that, that too is designed, depending on the type of system you run, could counter out like big demands, or how you get, how we get, how the town gets built. So our billing from Carolina Power Partners is based on demand as well. So when demand goes up, we pay more. Same thing for those customers, if their demand goes up, you know, they pay more. So it offsets, we're not losing money in those situations. Then finally, large general services, you see we only have eight of those. Facility charge, this one's pretty dramatic as well, from 345 to 600, but you'll notice that basically that's a change from the demand that we were just talking about. There was a flat demand fee in our current rate schedule of $250. We essentially, essentially just moved that over to streamline the structure. And then we dropped the kilowatt-per-hour rate, and then we also slight increase on the demand charge. So that's kind of a breakdown of the, of the rates. The next page, you'll see we did a comparison of several utilities in the area. You can see under residential services, the average is $20.50, that first column. And that's for the, you know, that is the base rate. So that is the facility charge that's being charged. Facility charge is charged whether you use 1 kilowatt-hour or 10,000 kilowatt. So that's, that's being able to have access to the service. And to help us recover the cost of the hard infrastructure it takes to get it there. You can see Granite Utilities is at 21, Rocky Mountains 26, Wilson's 15. Washington is kind of an anomaly down at, at eight, but I don't, what you really need to look in the situation is what are they paying per kilowatt-hour? Duke Energy is at 14, Tarver's 15, Apex is 26, EdgeCom Mark's 25, Halifax E and 633. So we're in the average for these, and so I feel pretty confident and comfortable with that number that was established. On the last page, you'll see a break, a breakdown of the average residential service. This is based on, so we have essentially two recommendations here. You got your existing rates, and then you got your recommended rate. And what you're showing is that different levels of energy use- And what you're showing is that different levels of energy usage, you'll see that there's 500, 650, 800, 1,000, 1,500, 2,000. These are your average monthly energy uses, kilowatt hours. And then you'll see what that bill would run based upon that consumption under the existing rate, what are run under the recommended rate. And you'll see the percent change. And so if you look over to the, to the right, our average customer uses roughly 1,100 kilowatt hour per month. And so you'll see that at that, they're actually getting a slight decrease in what they pay. I mean, it is slight. And as you increase your usage, the, your decrease in what you pay increases. Now, on the flip side of that is if you only use 500, you're going to pay 3.2% more. But anything under that 1,100 mark, well, really I think the threshold was 750, 750 kilowatts, you're going to pay slightly more, but everything after that, your, your rates, your cost to the customers is going to start to go down. So we're looking, staff's looking to implement that in our new rate structure that goes out with the annual budget. We don't necessarily have to make this change, but going through the process we did, we felt like our kilowatt per hour rate was a little high. We're still lower than the national average. Again, the big thing here is it'll streamline the effect on the customer during peak weather events. So I stand by for any questions.
I know. I'm sorry, 200, 2,939 residents here?
That's, yeah, yes.
Yeah, because on our side of town, we're, of course, we're, you can see, so our rate structure is totally different.
As well as some folks on our, on this side of 11 as well.
On this side of 11 also, our rate structure is totally different.
And what we'll do is as the new budget year goes into effect, we'll try to get some things out to our citizens that just remind them if they're on, if they pay their electric or their utility bill to Granville Utilities, then they'll need to make sure they seek out what Granville Utilities is doing in their budget.
There is going to be an increase.
I don't recall, but.
I think it is. I think that's what I saw. Check it out. I think it's going to be an increase.
I do have a question. So again, I'm processing. And when I hear stability, consistency during extreme weather, that makes me comforted because you, as the years go along and the ecosystem, it is going to get hotter in the summer, it's going to get colder in the winter. So I'm okay with that. But when I'm looking, I'm looking at the rate, the existing rate, which is lower and comparable to other areas, I think about the equity, equitable, the population, like it's, it's different, it's different, the, the population between these towns. Some are similar, some are different. And going from $20 to $25 is going to be an increase of a little over $7 if I'm not mistaken. That plus the GFL plus the sewer. In totality, correct me if I'm wrong, as of July, there would be a total increase of around $20.
Seven.
Seven, seven, seven. The sewer would be seven and three.
I think Anthony wants, he's going to want to talk a little bit more about the seven in terms of.
Of this seven on electric? Essentially, the only people that would have that $7 increase is if you didn't have any consumption whatsoever. So it's going to be the minimum on your bill. So every bill has the minimum regardless. So once you get, and our average is 1,100. So our average customer, that's the average. Take somebody who has an inefficient home, they're probably more into 2,000 KWH or even higher. Or if you have somebody have high demand, so they're actually going to see savings. So I think to kind of answer your point about increases, unless somebody's really using less than 500 kilowatt hours, they're not, or to 650, they're not going to see any increase.
If you can, think of it as a restructure of the rate. So it's basically restructuring what they use per kilowatt hour and putting that increase, if you will, on the flat rate, which we all pay.
There is an increase on the flat rate, but the rate we charge for the incremental, so this is fixed and then you have your incremental or variable cost, that's going to go down to compensate for, sell for on the very low users.
So what I hear you saying, I'm just going to repeat, that there'll be a flat rate, but on the kilowatts, the kilowatt usage, they'll, that's where the savings are from, especially for those structures that are not efficient. Electric bill goes up in the winter. All right, just wanted.
And then it's nothing for an energy bill to be way, way over 2,000 kilowatt hours in the winter. Especially if they're all, or if they're like old baseboard heating or things of that nature, they can really run up. Some people think it's actually, I mean, that may sound crazy, but some people actually heat with their oven. So in that element, it's, I mean, the elements in the oven, it's just that way. I mean, it's just inefficient. But they do what they have to do. They won't. It's unfortunate, but that, you know, that is some of the things we run into in customer service.
Yeah, Anthony, anybody, staff, I'm sorry. But do y'all offer, or do we offer any energy audits?
Yes, we've had a conversation. We had them historically during COVID, they quit. And then we have not reestablished those currently, but Ron and I have already discussed it and that's in the works for moving forward in the future.
I, I hope we can. I would like to see that, you know, get started back because that way people can then determine how they want to adjust to that because a lot of people don't realize how much, you know, they're losing, you know, because, you know, you think your home is one way, but when you do that audit, it'll show you. I'm from the old school. Martin Community Action used to do what they call a board door test. And I remember going into a lot of residents and they hook that thing up and you'd be surprised and you will see we're just. Then once they go in to fix it, they redo the test, it'll get so tight in there that sometimes it'd be, you'd quit. The house, once they fix it, plug in all the holes and everything. And that's why also too, if the citizen can get their stuff together, they got the taxes, age criteria, you're all part of it, you know, that's something that they need to look into. It's here for them, they need to look into that, you know, and that's a good source of trying to help get that back so that they can save all that.
I mean, just kind of in, in full disclosure, the people that are probably going to complain the most, I mean, that's going to affect the most is going to be somebody who has a vacant home, sitting there, maybe it was a house they haven't done anything with, hadn't made a decision, or they have a shop that has a meter on the shop, they don't use a lot of energy in that. So those are the kind of residents or customers that are going to probably see a bigger impact. But if it's in a house, a dwelling that's being used and lived in, more than likely, you know, they're going to see no effect or a marginal, marginal decrease.
Anybody have any questions? Well, Anthony, thank you for this, good information. I think this right here, I think this, I'm sorry, I think this can help us kind of explain to our, our residents, our citizens, when they ask us about the kilowatt. I think this is a good tool to have when you're talking to residents and be able to explain it to them and what their average is, what we're looking at, so.
Oh, you lost a revenue. Depends on how, how you change it.
That you'd be looking to raise the, the acronym mistakes, you know? Yes, thank you. Brains, it's burnt.
The PCA, so this would, this actual structure would, you know, get rid of the power cost adjustment that we have up there right now. So that would come off beginning until I want it just included. So I understand we based it on the revenues that will be collected. So that includes the power cost adjustment, what that did not include were the adjustments that were done back during COVID to give customers credits. We spent a lot of money giving customers credits during those couple of years. It, the calculations didn't include those credits that we gave out. But to answer your question, if you decrease both, you're just going to decrease your actual revenue that you're, and it would depend on how much you, a lot of variables. So it depends on how much you change the fixed rate versus how much you change the kilowatt per, kilowatt hour rate.
So Anthony, just real quick, so would it be, because a lot of times constituents have a hard time comprehending all of it. To me, it sounds very similar to, remember there were always commercials going into the summer, like the bill stabilization program, I think Granville used to do and stuff like that, where you'd have to call in and apply to get your bill stabilized so that you didn't have those great fluctuations. This is just building that in for everybody, including the town, so that there's more consistent, like the bill and the, like, you don't have to during the peak months go, hey, can I do the bill stabilization? Like, there's really not much, very minimal change in the revenue. It's just more stable with the lower price per kilowatt, the higher the usage.
Yeah, and I mean, so if there are people online, just to make sure there are level pay programs as well, so like you can establish a, you know, I want to pay, County Winterville's never done this, but you know, I want to pay $200 a month, regardless of what my bill is. And then at the end of the year, there's a true up. So you either have to pay more if you're short or you get a refund. So that was one type of level pay program. But to your point, yes, this is stabilizing it and trying to streamline it and get rid of those big spikes. Make it so that it's more manageable throughout the year. Yes, this doesn't change that. If we get into another natural gas issue like we did before, we would certainly potentially have to bring back that power cost adjustment or, you know, look at different rate structure. But this is not to say, you know, nobody's bill is going to get over a certain, even in a normal winter, right? I mean, it's not going to say, it's not going to keep their bill from going up, it's just going to keep it from going up and how fast it goes up and how much it goes up. So I think it's important to take away that it's, while it is minimizing that effect, it's not going to keep it from going up in the wintertime, it's still going to go up in the wintertime, it's still going to go up in the summertime when that AC is running, you know, under 10. So it's not to say there's not going to be spikes and valleys, but it should say they're not going to be as extreme.
I just, as a point of clarification, our people can pay their light yields in advance, you know?
Yes, ma'am.
You'll do that. So if someone expects their bill to be real high, you know, leveling, like some communities will, they can pay in advance, get no credit.
Mayor, if I may, I have one last point.
Yes, ma'am.
Just speaking of explaining this to the various customers, is there a way in which we can explain it like a customer friendly way? I don't know, PowerPoint, something or another. I'm not a cartoonist or anything, but just something, because when you see illustration, you process it better, some are visual learned. And for some of our elderly citizens, they not, they may not be able to process this as much as when they see it or they can reference back to it. Just to put that into.
Try to tap into the creative folks that still can come up with.
And I think, speaking out of turn, maybe Jessica, I know your staff is ready to, when people come in, they can refer them and explain. So is, do we need anything on this part where you just?
Just know that unless you all direct us differently, it will be incorporated as part of the fee structure that goes into effect July 1st.
Okay. Is there anything else anyone else would like to?
I think it, I think if you, if you want to compare it to that situation, the best analogy would be to say the revenue neutral number, which was 35, from the 47 and a half to 35, that was considered revenue neutral. And what we're recommending today is revenue on the electric side of the house. It's, it's, it's revenue neutral, no increase or no decrease. There, there may be some nuance in there that causes it to be off just a little bit, but I mean, the, the design and the calculations that the engineering firm did, it is a revenue neutral situation, just like on the tax side.
Okay. Is there any other questions? If there's no other further question, we have a completed budget, correct?
Correct.
All right. So what is the pleasure of this board?
Adjourn. Okay. I didn't want you to try to pass a budget. I just didn't want you to try to make a motion to pass the budget. I just didn't want you to try to make a motion to pass the budget.
All right.
Hold, hold it here.
Have a, have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Motion made by Councilman Moy, second by Councilwoman Hawkins. Any discussion? If no discussion, all vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried, meeting would be adjourned.